Mrs. Neff?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Geno.
Here.
Mr. Hovman?
Right.
Mr. Sessom.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Mr. Ferrinoff.
Here.
Mr. Melvin.
In accordance with the terms of sunshine law, I note that this meeting was supposed in all school buildings, administration building, borough clerk's office, police headquarters, public library, four newspapers, and WCTC on January 3rd, 2013. Please revise that there is no smoking on school grounds inside or out. I now pass this meeting over to Dr. Janko for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Melvin. Tonight, with the superintendent's report for the COW, New Jersey, with the new New Jersey chief law, requires board training on the chief New Jersey evaluation, all of the things tied to the evaluation piece, etc. So that being said, Mrs. Formelli and I will do a short presentation and our board should work training. Mrs. Formelli.
Okay, you also have the PowerPoint presentation and you're hand handed. This is a similar presentation that we've shared with staff as well over this past year to keep them updated and informed. We've actually heard this title about the regulations, teacher observation evaluation. Regulations have been worked from different names, you've probably read the E4J, T10J, it has now ended up as achievement J. Pretty interesting for that for a while. So it's all one and the same, it's nothing different or new, but we now have a little bit more clarity on what we need to do this up and who we are, as it's now a work in place for this year for all of our teachers and administrators. So, one of the things I always talk about with staff and I've also spoken to you about it with administrators is the big picture view has all fit together, it's very important to me. And what was interesting, one of the meetings I was at, the state meeting, Tracy Severance, one of our state posts, put it all together as well, saying that all of these initiatives that we've been bowling out, all are connected. They're not isolated, they're all connected to student achievement. The Common Core requirements now, the Common Core standards, curriculum we have, the PAR assessments that are upcoming next year, instruction, the changes in the way that we will get data, now as progress targets, all makes sense in relationship to the evaluation and support models that we are going to be putting into place for our teachers in PLC fashion. So all of it does play and is intertwined, even though it's in separate segments in here first over there. So the teach, we grow overview, really these are the purposes behind the regulations and I, you know, obviously the bold, the key words in that inspection, read all that, teachers have the greatest influence on student learning, so of course it makes sense that we will be looking at how they're observing them and ensuring that they are effective in the classroom if they have the number one, if they have the number one impact on student achievement. The other piece of that is meaningfully benefit professional development is important to teachers to allow them to grow. And then also this act covers multiple measures of performance, just like we look at students, multiple measures of assessments to decide effectiveness for students, if they are being learned effectively, but we should be doing the same for our staff and looking at multiple measures, not just of observation information, but student achievement data and other measures that we're going to now evaluate our staff.
In context, when we're looking, there are certain things that have changed, but there are also certain things that are the same. Now, every teacher will have an annual evaluation. The superintendent is still required by law to develop evaluation policy to get district board approval. There are still going to be annual summary conferences, an annual performance report, individualized professional development planning, whether you call it PDC or PIP, personal improvement plans, those are still required. Three observations with post-observation conferences, we're all on a pending teaching staff by April 30th each year. And we still are required to have a mentoring program for most teachers, so all of those things are the same. When you look, we've been talking about the Danielson model. That is actually the first piece of this puzzle, the teacher practice model that we're through is just that, the Danielson model. And that's performance based on the teacher practice and should be given through, culminated through observations. Now, the new piece is going to require us to take SGP data, which the staple provides us, and that's student growth percentiles. And the SGO data, which will be developed individually to get a combination of the summer degree. You know, tested grades, four through eight, language arts, math. When you look at how it's all weighted, you're going to see 30% be SGP, 15% is the SGO, and 55% is that Danielson model we call it now. So, when you break it all out, those are the percentages that it's always, all going to be rated.
And that's just the testing areas where you're going to, back to people who are not formally in their background.
Now, when you look at the non-tested grades, in 13, 14, doesn't look all that fair, but the Danielson model will be representative of 85% of their basic summer score. 15% will be based on the SGO, and they'll have to do two SGOs opposed to one, that somebody else essentially did. Now, future targets now are going to be more in line with the tested areas. The state has said that this is a work in progress, and we're trying to move forward, but for 13, 14, that is the breakdown.
This is the requirements for our non-tenured and our tenured observations throughout the year now. What's different here is although we're still seeing non-tenured teachers three times, it's differentiated between years one and two and three and four. So what you see is for years one through two, first year, second year teacher, I'm going to be observed three times. Two of those are long observations, which consist of 40 minutes, and then one of those is a short observation, which consists of 20 minutes. All of them are using the Danielson framework and a TeachGAP tool managing that. If I'm a, when you're three or four teacher, slots out, I'm still seeing three, seeing a teacher three times, however, one long and two short. So it trades off there. Now, here's the difference, in a tenured teacher, we're used to seeing them once a year as a requirement. Now we're required to see them three times in a short observation model of 20 minutes. So we'll see them three times for 20 minutes if they are tenured. If a teacher is noted to be ineffective, or partially ineffective, and gets put on a corrective action plan, they have one more additional observation as what's listed there.
Yes, sir.
Yes. If more are required? Yes. District can obviously choose to do more, but I'll be quite honest and frank, I don't know how much it physically could do anymore. This is a lot of more additional observations on us. Because you know, also at the bottom, it also talks about pre-conferences that are necessary, and post-conferences that are required to, all of which add to the amount of time it continues to observe. It's not just going in and seeing, the teacher using the Danielson framework, but is talking ahead in time, having a pre-conference and then talking afterwards, which adds to the amount of minutes that you are, you know, working with that teacher.
How many previously, how many observations were required previously?
For tenured teachers? One. Non-tenured is three. That's where it's the same, however, it's traded off in the long and short within that non-tenured piece. It's the tenured piece to this regulation that really ups those observations, yes. So, being that the observation piece is a significant part, and that we have brought through the Danielson framework, I want to show you a quick clip that talks about the Danielson framework and will actually hear from Danielson herself.
No, cannot go louder, can't hear anything over here. He moved the microphone over.
It's not always happening to young, some of them, because it might mean you want everything to go smoothly, you want it to go well.
There was a topic with teachers' achievements, but, and such a much, they'll be able to qualify it. But that was the point with these observations to, uh, for sure.
The framework does alleviate some of those fears, because you know exactly what they're looking for. Working with this framework is definitely impacted by teaching, because taking advantage of.
So I want to just give you a brief review of what we gave yesterday.
Today we want to get a really understanding of how much freedom teaching matters. Research has shown that of all factors within the school that have an impact on student learning, the school must report the qualities of teaching they encounter every day. The framework for teaching provides communities for research sites and valuable history that helps schools and districts evaluate and improve the quality of their teaching. The idea for the framework for teaching is sparked by earlier research and classroom experiences and perspectives of a former teacher. When I was a teacher, I was speaking to some of the scientists who had been sort of thinking about this. And it's a way to take this, the seats and total water and the whole thing. They cut them in the water, and of course they said, I mean, they're challenges to make them a project. Which I'd say, if they made it a project, so it can take a long while to ask them to have a good look, and they would find a good as one that will offer a lot of time in a whole process. And so it happened, it looked very important to, even if they're going to, where are they? In the middle of this, we should have, to do, and first, the obvious thing is going to happen. He dropped one look at this seat, and he called his father, said, "I'm back," with a teacher. And I'm, of course, personally, a senior teacher, but the reason I'm talking this way is that incredibly difficult to read on public screen, all I can from that comment was that whatever we thought it was, it wasn't this. And really important point of this word is that it's very, this is the natural, that's the history of everyone.
So that was Charlotte Danielson herself. I can see how animated she is and passionate about the framework. And it does exactly what she said, it provides all of us with a common language and common expectation for observation. So I'm just going to quickly show you, she has four domains in the rubric for effectiveness. Domain one, planning preparation, domain two, domain two, classroom environment, three is instruction, and four is professional responsibility. What you see underlying domain two and three are the observable ones, as we go in and observe those two areas that we're looking for, and that are observable in the other two domains. Underneath those domains, not that I expect you to read all of them, but I want you to know that there are components underneath those domains that may each one of those up, and that teachers have gone for those, we train on these areas, and what constitutes good effective teaching in those areas. Teachers are evaluated through their observations with a rubric for level group. And what we say to our staff is that we want you to, your performance to be at a level three, but you may vacation from time to time to a level four. Teachers by nature, including myself, are perfectionists, and they always want to achieve that four all the time. So it's really important that we start out and say, if you're at a three, it's good, it's okay, that's good instruction. And from time to time, we go above that level, and we exceed it, but not every dozen will be at four.
Now, during the past year, we've talked about this a lot, but also by law, all teaching staff members being evaluated must be trained on evaluation rubric. We've, I'm pretty happy to say, we've well, I've, I've heard, I mean, we've spent a tremendous amount of time. And speaking to other districts, I think we are well beyond what they did to train their staff. Before observing, for the purpose of evaluation, all observers must be trained. All our administrators were trained last summer, were tested last summer, and passed the test. All observers also must participate in co-observations. We've done that in the Kingland Model Level Summit. All evaluators must participate in newly refreshed training that's ongoing, and that's our word of residence, on an ongoing basis, not just one quick hour and done. And I must certify every year that the observers, for the purpose of the evaluation, have been trained. And I believe in that, so, well, I love that. All students can show growth, calculating student growth percentiles, that's the SGP. That's a measure that we're actually going to begin from the state. It's going to be scored on a one to a 99. And growth baseline is established by the students prior learning, as measured by all of the New Jersey S schools. So in other words, the state said, well, we're moving to PAR, but we have all of this rich data, I've tested New Jersey S for many, many years. It would be ridiculous to throw that out. So really, they're going to be using that data. And then, obviously, as years go on, and we're in PAR, we're in that New Jersey S, and it will become a PAR data, but you're not going to district guard that, just because we're moving to the best of our own.
So the SGP is based on the median score that a teacher receives, so again, to put it in context. So the context is not a teacher, these are the scores, the SGP scores from my class with this past NJAS administration. They will take the median score from my class, and that becomes my SGP. Now, we're told that the score won't be 55 as listed there as an SGP, but rather a rating of a scale of one to four. So that that is then calculated with the formula of the accelerator.
I just wanted to add, do you submit scores as opposed to mean, because that question comes up a lot? Because a mean is skewed by, say, you're on a test today, you're on eighty minutes, you got seven. What happened? All of a sudden, you got a four, or a three, or whatever. You have that type of thing, and you have other types of things that can still mean as opposed to mean, the mean is what's on the basis.
So remind us, this is for the tested areas, so the teachers who are in tested areas, it's fourth grade, we see an SGP this year. We don't know when we'll be seeing them, but we are totally aware. The other thing that's important to know about SGPs is that the state is saying if there is multiple years of data for a teacher, they will use that multiple years of data as an extended list and take a mean score of that versus a smaller list. So really trying to give the teacher the benefit of the doubt here, with the best score possible. Also important to know is even if a teacher may be in a tested area, if they don't have 20 students assigned to them, they will not receive an SGP for that year. However, that's cumulative. So, if I don't have 20 students this year, but next year, if they have 10 this year, and I have 10 next year, and that makes the 20, going to be SGP fix in. So that's the difference there. This situation mostly would apply like in a special ed situation where there are smaller moves of instruction happening. A student also has to be in the district 70% of the time in order for, or a teacher in order to receive an SGP. So as we mentioned earlier, teachers will receive an SGP in tested areas, and then they're also required to have an SGO. Teachers who are not in a tested area have to have two SGOs, and that's the breakout you see there below. An SGO is a student growth objective. Really what it is, if you're familiar with goal setting, is a SMART goal. It's specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and timed out. And we are, we're beginning to work on setting those SGOs with our staff. As soon as they return, we'll be looking at inventory data, baseline data, and using all sorts of assessments that we've put into place in the last year. Which is an example of what the state is going to have an example of a possible goal that could be raised. So you see the goal there blue, 80% of students increase at least one completion level on a text reading and comprehension assessment, that's a district assessment. And in the rubric that follows, everything is related to a four-point rating there. So if the rubric is converted to a four-point rubric, if 90% of the students meet that goal, the teacher receives a four for their SGO, meaning, and so on. This is just an example of using, so for example, something special that we change is rubrics on our assessments, or maybe even in some of the other areas, this is an example of a rubric, 90% of our students meet the goal of achieving a more specific goal of seven out of nine skills, again, district development assessment. This is the timeline we have in place this year for SGO and grading. So as you can see, we have through November 15th to work with our staff and administrators in setting those goals. And then you also, most importantly, what I always say is, it's not just the goal setting, but what we're doing behind the goal setting, which is the action planning and following through with the actions to meet the goal. So there's a timeline for doing that as well. Maybe you're checking, how are you doing, are you getting close to meeting that goal? What do we need to change in our instruction to meet that goal now? And then at the end of the year, reviewing in May and June if they reach the SGO.
This is what the state has sent us, and this could change as well, and they've said that, but at this point, this is what we're going to think, we're highly long to break out. This is for teachers in the tested area. So, like we said before, the tested area, 50% of the weight is going to be the teacher practice of the Danielson model, set of observations. So say their last score came up great, that would be weighted by 50%, or in other words, if everybody's score 1.5. Say their student growth percentile was 2.5, and that's weighted 35%, and they get .77, .77 that, and then the student growth objective came up with great, and they all get weighted 15%, so we get .45. You total that, and the scale that we have seen, and this is the only scale we've seen at this point, would be one to 1.75, to 2.5, etc. That teacher would be rated as an effective teacher at the end of the seventh grade. And all of that would be done at the end of the year, and we'll call it that as well. Teachers rated ineffective or partially effective receive support through corrective action plans. Once the system is fully implemented, districts will be able to identify highly effective teachers. And it's our hope that, because the state is setting, that we want to look at different protocols to recognize those highly effective teachers. Whether it be expanded career pathways, leadership opportunities, award recognition. Pathways, maybe, and the state has even talked about different ways to rate that, if they do it over a considerable period of time, instead of the standard observation. Yes, please. I'm sorry?
Of the last line, the board's the recognition initiative?
Yeah.
What does that mean?
Would that maybe, from a board perspective, all the highly effective teachers we recognize by board? It could eventually mean merit pay. It could, it could be a litany of things. It could be, depending on how this all plays out, they, if they're over, if they spend a period of time, they could maybe not have to do the exact same evaluation, observation model, and do some type of project. That's what, when you look at pathways, it's like that. Pathways used to be a term that tenured, highly effective teachers that were rated in the district could do a project or something like that, and be rated that way. And so there's a lot of, it could be.
Is merit pay, that's a point, is modeling issued, or CPA issued, or making the wall, so far?
It could, I mean, I think we're light years away from that. This is something that the state's going out, they don't have attention, like to get it. But yes, if merit pay becomes part of the equation, that will be part of the collective bargaining agreement. And obviously, we as a group would have to, just like we look at anything else, we would have to budget for it.
So I'm closing it off. I'll just let you, I'll actually, I'll read this too. This is a very important quote that I've shared with our staff. Regulations are regulations, I even said that to you, like, they have regulations, and training, and so we have to find, you know, like lemonade and lemonade. So, what's most important to me is professional development, and making the most effective teachers we possibly can have. And this quote speaks to that. A commitment to professional learning is important, not because teaching is of poor quality and must be fixed, but rather because teaching is so hard, and we can always improve it. No matter how little lessons, we can always make it better. Just as in other professions, every teacher has a responsibility to be involved in career long fights to improve the practice. And that's a pressure taken here, this is about improving on practice. Thank you. Any questions?
If a teacher is rated ineffective or partially effective, and they receive the support, and they're still rated ineffective or partially effective, what happens?
Well, if they're completely ineffective, I believe, or the law is complete, then I would, you file a penalty. Right, Mark?
Yeah, two years in a row, ineffective, we filed finesse charges, laws, mandates that the teacher be dismissed by the arbitrator unless the teacher can somehow show that the charges were discriminatory reasons, or be followed on evaluation models, so forth. And then you have discretion if the evaluation is ineffective one year and partially effective another year, you don't have to necessarily file those to teachers.
Question?
How are those interim periods, or very period, merit takes these in my, in my, 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 my recognition.
I tend to think merit recognition is a little, and more pay somewhere, this is going to end up in some future. You said it might be a one-way out, okay? In that interim period where two years go by, where before you file payment charges, some considerations should also be given to the motion, if you want. You're not doing, I'm not only not going to give you one, I'm going to take something away. And it's going to be a two-way street, it can't be a one-way street here. A lot of things here, they're always easy one-way street.
Will all the corrective action plans be put in writing, the sign-offs from both parties?
Yes, just as we do now.
Debbie, I'm sorry, Debbie.
Well, that's okay. Will there be carbon copies so that they don't disappear out of files, as we've had done in the past?
We're actually using a management system called TeachGAP, so it's all electronic, and then we'll also have paper backup.
Okay.
Carbon copies, you are dating yourself.
Well, when you send an email and you put a CC, that's carbon copied.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Janko, thank you, Mrs. Formelli. Okay, this time, we'll move on to agenda additions, banal deletions, which there are none. Public comments, which there are none. We're going to move on to the presentation and committee reports. We're going to start, well, buildings and grounds, Mr. DeHakis is not here. I don't think any of his many members are going to report with the speaker, so we can do it. Okay, next, curriculum. In our curriculum meeting, curriculum student activity. In our curriculum meeting, curriculum student activity meeting, we reviewed the goals and objectives for last year and the status was shared with everyone. And all objectives will be complete by the end of the summer. We also recognize the supervisors and curriculum coordinator and as well as Mrs. Promelli for the excellent and hard work they've done all year and during the summer in order to achieve all of these objectives. Um, high school applied arts elective review is supposed to be completely implemented for next year, 2014-15. Currently under review. We're looking at offering new 21st century classes, eliminating outdated ones. Uh, maybe looking into implementing some STEM classes. So a whole complete revision of our applied arts department. GNT, we're looking into bringing the robotics as a pilot, the GNT program this year. As well as, um, adding to the current curriculum K to five and revising curriculum six to eight. Uh, resources for world language and other areas. We'll see a whole lot of resources that are going to be improved tonight. French, Spanish, world history, graphic arts, TV production, finance. So we will do that as well. Our iPad survey and expansion. We had a wonderful, um, um, iPad, actually demonstration, our video that was made by Mr. Norris' calc class from this past year. They did the pilot for iPad's. And they did a wonderful job and it was really very informative and encouraging to see the many ways in which these students were able to use the iPads for their studies. We want to withstand on that. We're looking at the high school freshman academy. We look like it's possible to do AP literature. It may not be possible this year. But we are definitely going to do the high school freshman academy. High school co-op program. There were six to seven students last year. We had 14 signed up for September. And this class is basically a work in progress. You know, reaching out to other schools to see maybe how they run their programs and making it look a little bit better than it currently is. Career Day, um, we reviewed what, what happened in Career Day. We have two currently that are going on usually at the high school. Again, this is all at the high school level. Uh, some examples, I spoke of the woman who won cupcake wars, military and armed forces, where the spring career day. Um, iTunes University did veterinary medicine lecture. So there was a lot going on during Career Days. They are going to continue. High school, uh, student senior survey. We received 77 responses. So we went over some of the feedback there. Freshman Academy, we had 24 students last year. They really did quite excellent and will be moving on to academic and basic classes. We're going to again try to use iPads. We have 17 students enrolled so far this year. Uh, our co-curriculum report, um, we're just looking at recommendations for new clubs and actually maybe sunsetting, uh, some of the clubs which were no longer as popular as they used to be. Uh, option two, we had seven to eight seniors who used it for electives and it was extremely, um, successful for this purpose. And we're looking maybe to expand it a little bit this year. Uh, GK status ranking, um, we looked at different options and, um, we're going to be going with what we call option three. It will basically start with an A plus value and go down from there. It will also start with this year's freshman class and will not affect the sophomore, juniors, and seniors. It will better help align our grades to colleges and universities. AP testing results, the numbers went up to 89 students taking the test. 181 exams were given, um, which is the highest number of students that take AP exams in three years. And everyone who enrolled in the AP class took the AP exam. Uh, team prevention, um, we're on target for surveying this fall. The CEP will be training September and October. Uh, preschool numbers at the time of our meeting, we were at 157 currently enrolled in future stars, which was great. Uh, summer trainings, curriculum assessment rating. Uh, there were a tremendous, tremendous amount, if you look at the agenda of training going on this summer. And again, I just want to thank Mrs. Promelli and Mr. Revlosky and our two supervisors, Mr. Prusy and Mrs. Gamble for all of their hard work this summer in putting all these programs and training sessions on for the teachers. Um, new teacher orientation, uh, actually is taking place this week at Roosevelt School. Uh, Latchkey, um, at, again, as of our meeting, the Latchkey numbers were 63. They have increased since then. And staff is, will be hired at this meeting. Our next meeting, I share with them, meeting. Adult High School, we have 10 students possibly enrolled. Uh, we will be running this for one more semester. We are looking at eliminating them in January. Uh, our grading procedures, grades five to eight, uh, will be implemented this September. And the high school, uh, there is a committee that is working on, uh, looking at the grading procedures and we hope to implement something uh, next year in 14-15 and that is it. Uh, findings?
Yeah, questions, findings, maybe examples. How many people, how many pairs in grade were 29, 10 and 15?
Um, I don't have, we, we did excellent. They did really, really well with the AP exams. There were maybe two subjects where grades went down slightly over last year. So that is being looked into, but overall, the students did really well. I mean, I didn't have the number of one, two, threes, fours with me, but I can certainly get that for next one semester. Or I can, I can, I can talk to them on that.
Uh, findings, so we have new advice, I have, um, just a couple of financial questions that came off the conversation we had. Uh, we spent a few extra dollars on one gray school replacing the rug, I believe. I don't know exactly how much, maybe over this old one, remember this one. I don't recall. I asked about questions about the high school gym. I pointed out we had a debate process going on up there. Uh, pretty much it's almost complete, not quite complete yet, but I was just curious as to whether there were any cost overruns. And, uh, really there were two issues. And one was a painting of the floor issue. I think they wanted to have some special paint around on the sidelines and do the floor, which I believe we're going to go ahead with. And the other one was a re, the cost of re-inspiring the leeches. I think we had a conversation later on today with, uh, the board up in executive session. Talked about, uh, status of insurance proceeds from Sandy. The, uh, the, the seed, all of the insurance money that we drew from us, from our insurance carriers were over $200,000. Uh, we all waiting for some fever money. And that's grew over 400, over close to $450,000. And that is pending yet. We talked about some prelimin, preliminary numbers on some estimates for year-end surplus figures. And I was just curious if, uh, there are going to be any surprises or bad there? And, uh, all preliminary, no surprises on the good or bad side. I really will report this at the time. Uh, we spoke about split parts and stuff of that nature. And, uh, uh, we're going to really make the seed, get some reports. I guess the board will be allowed to have some reports at the end of September. Still sort of a work in progress in putting everybody up on the system and getting, uh, intelligently for summary executive reports out of the system. So we're focused to get that into September. Uh, we spoke about, uh, the long-range plan and the 40, I believe it was $43 million number that was forced around at, I guess at the last board meeting. I had asked if that number was given to the observer. Uh, I haven't seen it yet in the observer and I believe the reporter is going to be getting it shortly, hopefully. Uh, two other things, PSE G audit. As everybody knows, you know, we've had all kinds of questions regarding our energy bills in the past and the slow, painful progress and finding as you take information that is useful. Uh, PSE G is likely to come in here within the next month, I'm going to call it. Some of the times we'll be talking, getting everybody together, doing the presentations that we're going to have. So hopefully I'll have some more information to report on the body and on this board. And, uh, last thing I'd ask really, uh, what the status is with our accountants. Are they, have they started the year-end audit, you know, officially year-end 2013? And they will start that audit prior to the end of August. So they'll get the next 26, 27 days in this year. And they'll be through then, thank you. And I also asked, uh, Mr. Robert Hardy about some of the order points that were brought out of last audit. If you recall, I believe there were 13 order points that need to be addressed and have in fact, have they effectively addressed and corrected and solved? And all of one is up in question right now. And I believe he probably hasn't gotten it solved. I just don't believe it's resolved or what that. Because everybody knows that we want to have order points showing up over the years in a row. Bad things happen if you get it back two years in a row, so we're marking it. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Governor. Public, public questions?
We hope that will be next week.
Okay, shared services. Um, as, uh, the mayor and council thank Dr. Jendo for working so effectively, um, to create the ordinance for school traffic as a shared service and, um, they commend all the work that we, um, to bring forward. Also, um, the traffic plans, um, that have, were drawn up years ago. Um, they're only a work in progress. It's my understanding that there are board members stating that the high school circle will be taken out. Um, there's people that are upset about it. I asked the superintendent about this. There's nothing that's been shown and, and that was unbeknownst to him. Also, as part of the shared service, the borough will be doing line striping for the fire lanes around the schools and the crosswalks in the street.
We had a meeting last night and, uh, we got a copy of the books that we presented out to the van drivers for, uh, the 13, 14 year of what they had came through and, uh, everything else. Uh, also, we're buying two van buses this year, uh, 29 passengers. And we're going to be looking at, um, ordering like two buses every year to try and catch up to fleet now that we're taking basis. If we can keep them under, I believe, uh, 15 years, you get more money for them. It might even be 10. But around the 10-year mark is when we'll start showing that they're taking a beating. So it's going to be looked at for the future. Uh, we also went over, uh, a letter or two about the complaints from the parents that might keep that bus last year, but now they're in a different school and moved up a grade, why can't they get a bus this year? And as per usual, now if you look without, you live beyond the limits, but within the limits of walking what you did before. And lastly, um, there is a concern about the busing and dismissal of the kids at Roosevelt School, whereas the buses are trying to pull in and everybody's going out. Uh, the kids are just running between the buses like no control. Uh, suggestions made, are we going to look into? And review that. Maybe the walkers can get released first and then when the bus, people can get released second or vice versa. So we don't have a run between the buses. You know, once the bus is full, the bus wants to pull out. We saw the walkers running to the parents' cars because they hung up on them. So that, that's going to be reviewed and also about possibly coming off and, uh, a part of the circle that suggests for the buses and the parents can get in there to make that a little bit more difficult. And another suggestion was maybe the buses could pull on the side along the administration building and have the buses there. But that's all going to be looked at, uh, down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Traffic liaison?
Uh, yes, the mayor and council have introduced and had the first reading on ordinance 13-1992 regarding the change in, uh, parking and some of the traffic flow primarily at the high school, middle school, and Kennedy. Uh, second reading will be at the first reading in September. And then there's a, once it's approved, there's a 20-day publication period. So hopefully by the end of September, uh, the new parking rules will be put in place. And there are significant differences, uh, not only the expanded no parking areas at the high school, but around Kennedy School where they could park away for the kids if they moved, there's no parking. So what we hope to do is, uh, through the public relations committee, somehow get it up on the website with maybe maps or pictures or something to spell out for the parents. And the police are going to be very aggressive, uh, once this is posted to take it and make sure the traffic, uh, moves and the, the parking, the new parking rules are prepared to. Uh, they're, they're also looking at other traffic law options that aren't in the ordinance, but, uh, there are other issues that are forming up. And the crossing guards are all set and assigned. There are some modifications from where the posts were last year based on use. But, uh, we've been remarking says that everything is in place and, uh, ready for this road school.
Thank you, Mr. Sessler. Uh, CTA? And just a minute.
Um, as part of the, um, Trenton State Leadership Team, we have our meeting on the seventh of Trenton. And the department ed is working on enhancing student, um, performance. They're, they're continuing to work on updates to that student, um, achievement. Um, the NJEA, the contributions to health care, expires next year. So, um, I think they're going to start working on that. Um, the contribution that they give, that excites, that is the, um, contract. Also, uh, the special ed task force, um, is moving forward because New Jersey still pays a high amount on for special ed. And, uh, Senator Ruiz has a bill which will be, um, heard in length of session, which, um, is asking that all PLEs are given extra time to complete their budgets. Um, that's supposed to be voted on by December. Uh, the state department ed wants, um, every child from grade one up to be tested for dyslexia. This is extremely expensive and will be a big burden on the board of ed's to do this testing. Um, so they're going back and forth with this, um, with this bill. I don't know when it's going to be heard, but they are going back and forth with it. Also, um, I would like to commend, um, Dr. Jendo, Mrs. Promelli and the administration for all the diligent work that they've done over the past year and a half, um, bringing curriculum, all types of programs to the students. I know that the issue of the report that was seen in the store ledger is over a four-year period. And Dr. Hope, I believe Dr. Jendo and Mrs. Promelli is going to explain that for the public. But as far as the work that they've done, it's explained, it's exemplary. So thank you very much for what they've done. Also, the borough is going to put out an email blast after the second reading of the work of the track ordinance so that parents will be able to go and view that or they're going to post the ordinance, um, on the website. So parents will be able to go and look at that and ask questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Burrell. Uh, let's move on to public comments on any item. Board member comments?
Can? Uh, just a quick question for Bill. You said they reassigned some crossing cards. I was wondering whatever happened with the grant situation if they were able to add the additional crossing card there because the children do not walk to the middle of the school. They cross on the corners.
I think they're, they're, the last time I remember, they're reassigning one of them. There not be anyone at this point, however, we're going to remark I was looking at pulling a crossing guard from somewhere on Park where nobody uses it, possibly moving it over there. So nothing has been settled, like if you look at it beginning of school, if it does have the resources from the people.
Because it's very, very dangerous that you could sit there and cross around the middle and in a perfect world, the kids should walk to the middle, but the parents drop and go and the kids, they cross on the corners and parents are busy and they're, you know, trying to get to work on line. And they don't stop, so it'll be great if that can be done.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Um, I'd like to say, um, the governor vetoed bill S-1191, um, which would have created barriers to school districts, um, efforts to save taxpayers on funds by subcontractors. So he vetoed that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, this time we will move into executive session. We saw percent to be open public meetings act at the board meeting closed session at this time to discuss confidential matters pertaining to personnel negotiations, student matters, and/or journeyifying privilege. It is expected that the matters discussed in closed sessions shall be made public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Going to get a motion? Second?
So I'm going to go down to the workshop, is it too late? Because I think she said, as long as it's on the table. So I'm going to cancel on the room, but I'm going to be there for the workshop. If she, if you start going over there, whatever.